We're under Item 7, Study Session. Receive Report and Provide Direction Regarding the Intention to Transition to a By-District Method of the City Elections. Consider Adopting a Resolution Appropriating $45,000 from the General Fund Balance and Authorizing the City Manager to Enter into a Contract with National Demographics Corporation for Districting Services. City Attorney Zaffarano.
Thank you. Good evening again. This item is brought to you for discussion by the city manager, the city attorney, and the city clerk's office. And the purpose of bringing this item to you is to advise you about the options to mitigate the city's financial exposure to a potential claim of attorney's fees arising from a future threat of litigation under something called the California Voting Rights Act. So let me just take a couple of minutes and give you a little background, and then we'll introduce the consultants that are here to do a more detailed presentation. So the CVRA, California Voting Rights Act, effective in 2002, aims to transition public agencies with elected city councils or boards away from at-large elections and to elections that are done by districts to reduce what the statute says are instances of racially polarized voting. Many hundreds of California agencies have transitioned away from at-large elections to district elections. And one of the reasons they did that, or did it when they did, is because attorneys have sent letters to those agencies demanding that the transition occur under state law. And once an attorney sends such a letter, then the city can be liable for up to, I guess the going rate is now $32,000, we put 30 in the staff report, but I think it's gone up since then, if the city then agrees to comply. So the reason why this is coming to you tonight on sort of a rush basis, I guess for lack of a better term, is that one of your neighboring cities, Burlingame, was in the news lately. They received a letter out of the blue, even though lots of cities in California and on the peninsula have gotten such letters, but Burlingame got one just last week. So they ended up having to pay the attorney's fees that were demanded in the letter and then issue what's called a resolution of intention to go to by-district election. So they begin the process. And that process would cost an additional, somewhere in the neighborhood of about $45,000. So that letter, frankly, so close to home, is what prompted the city manager's office, city attorney's office, city clerk's office, all of us who were looking at this happening in front of our eyes, realized that if we wanted to tell the city council about this and allow the city council the option to be proactive and do something before the letter comes as opposed to after the letter comes, now would be the time to look at that. So we wanted to make sure that the city council was informed about all the options in advance and give the city council an ability to mitigate that risk by taking certain actions now before receiving the letter. So you'll hear a more detailed staff report. We have one in the packet with a number of options. And I want to indicate that the exposure to the city is not just the $30,000 or $32,000 that would be demanded by an attorney letter. What happens is if the city does not actually go to or indicate its intention to go to district elections, then the attorneys who submit these letters immediately go to court and file a lawsuit. And once that lawsuit is filed, they thereby become entitled to six-figure amounts of attorney's fees. And you'll hear some stories from the consultants just recently about this happening. And so it's actually quite startling what can happen really on a day-to-day basis if the city council doesn't act. So we don't mean to give you something that requires an urgent action, but I think it does require your consideration at this time. So there are a number of actions that are proposed, options in the staff report. The consultants will go over those with you. One of those options is to issue a resolution of intention to transition to these elections by 2020. Another is by 2022. And a third option is not to do it at all. And the consultants will walk you through what the pros and cons are of those options and the risks of those options. So we can talk later in response to questions about some of those options and what those legal risks are. So without any further ado, I'd like to introduce two individuals from the National Demographics Corporation. We have Shalise Tilton and we have Doug Johnson, both of whom will be collaborating on the presentation. And I think they have a brief PowerPoint as well.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council Members. It's our pleasure to be here. Our company name is National Demographics Corporation. You'll hear us refer to it as NDC. You'll also hear us refer to the California Voting Rights Act as CVRA. So you'll hear that often throughout this presentation and if you proceed forward. I'm joined here by the President of the Company, Dr. Douglas Johnson. NDC has been serving agencies for over 40 years in their districting and redistricting needs. So just to put in context what your city attorney was saying, that roughly 43% of all cities that have populations over 10,000 are now, have now moved to voting districts. So prior to the CVRA, where there were only roughly 8%. So you can see that it's definitely a trend and happening particularly in this area. NDC, of the five cities that have transitioned, in San Mateo County, NDC assisted all five of those cities in the transition. So there's some very specific terminology when we're talking about election systems. And presently, San Bruno has an at-large election system. So all the voters in the entire jurisdiction vote for all the council members. There is a type of election system called a from-district system, and that would be where the, all the voters in the entire jurisdiction vote for the council members, but the council members have to reside in specific districts. So in this case, there would be four defined districts, and each candidate would be selected from one of those districts. Both the at-large and the from districts are susceptible to challenges under the California Voting Rights Act. The by-district elections are where the jurisdiction is divided into four equal districts, and only those voters that reside in the jurisdiction vote for the candidate who also resides in that same district. So the voters live in the district, and the candidate would live in that specific district. There are some alternative voting systems that you may hear of out there, cumulative voting, ranked choice voting. Those are only available to charter cities and to those cities who have already gone through court and it's been a court-ordered settlement. So that's not available to the city at this time. So we will be revisiting this exact slide at the end of our presentation. And as your city attorney had mentioned, you have some options to consider. And one of those would be to make the change happen now. There is a deadline to have that change happen in time for the November 2020 election. And that deadline is driven by, both by law and by your registrar of voters. So your registrar has requested that any changes be completed by June 1st. So it's about 80, I think it's 83 days from today. So it is a tight timeline to make it happen, but it's very doable. There's another option to wait and to actually proclaim your intent now through a resolution, but your intent to do it not until after 2022. And there are certain pros and cons to doing that as well that we'll discuss. Or the other options are to take no action now, be ready to go if a demand letter is received, or to take no action. And if a demand letter is received, do some further evaluation and analysis with your city attorney.
So just a bit of background on California Voting Rights Act. It's based on federal law, which has been around since 1965. And I won't go through all the different details, but essentially, under the federal law, there are four tests to determine if you're in violation of law. You have to fail all four before you're found in violation and have to go to district elections. And what California did is they took out two of those four. So you used to have to be able to show that the protected class population was large enough to be a majority of a district. You no longer have to show that. You also had to show that, what they called the totality factors, that race was somehow either overtly or covertly influencing campaigns and influencing the vote directly because of race. And you no longer have to show that in the California law. All that's left is this racially polarized voting statistical analysis. And so it's taken out any need for a plaintiff to show any kind of prejudice, any kind of discrimination, or any kind of bias. And simply, it's this mathematical analysis of the election returns. And there's a lot that goes into this, and it's very much kind of a black box art to look at this. But when we're looking at racial block voting, what we do is, oh, good, I got the fire. We chart out all the precincts. So like each circle in this chart would be a precinct. And as we go from left to right, the precincts get more ethnic, whichever protected class we're looking at, whether it's Latinos, or African Americans, or Asian Americans. As the precincts get more heavily that group, we go from left to right. And then this, we do a different chart for each candidate. So this would be candidate X, as they go from 0 to 40, or whatever percent they get, we would chart the precincts. So if it's 20% Latino, and the candidate got about 10% of the vote, well, the dot would end up here. And so we chart those out and see if there's a relationship. This is an example of black and white racial block voting. You know, as the precincts get more ethnic, that candidate goes up in almost a one-to-one relationship. So that's what the plaintiffs want to find, is very clear relationship. What jurisdictions want to find that are concerned about such a challenge is something like the bottom chart, where the slope of that line is flat, and the precincts kind of bounce up and down. It doesn't really matter how ethnic the precincts are. The candidates' numbers are bouncing around randomly. So that would show a lack of a relationship and a lack of block voting. And so these two are, these kinds of charts are how we assess, is there block voting? And then if the charts show that one group, Asian Americans, Latinos, African Americans, or Native Americans, that their candidates are doing better, essentially their vote, that group is supporting a candidate, and that candidate is losing, then that's racially polarized voting. And these are nice, clear examples they showed illustrate. What we really get in reality is charts that look like this. And then we have to figure out, is that flat? Is it a slope? You know, what's going on? And this is why these cases get so expensive. Is a bunch of statistical experts get in a room with a lot, even more lawyers, and everyone makes their case? My kind of flippant but somewhat true line is, a jurisdiction will win one of these cases as soon as we get a judge who minored in statistics. But if you ask any lawyer, you can get, you can find out the odds of getting a judge who minored in statistics, and it's almost zero. And so what happens is the plaintiffs come up with these charts. They have all kinds of data problems in the background, but they look pretty. And then the judges kind of throw up their hands and say, okay, fine. Which is why no one has won any of these cases yet. So they're really hard for cities to defend. They're very expensive, even if you do succeed. And so what we're seeing is more and more of these letters coming out. And what the process requires, if you do get the letter and decide to make the change, or decide to make the change proactively, well, I guess these are, this is if you get the letter. First, the attorney sends a letter. They get $32,000. It's $30,000, as I mentioned, adjusted for inflation, so now it's up to $32,000. You get essentially $32,000 for sending the letter. They have to justify their costs, but they almost always get $32,000. You then get 45 days to decide what you're going to do from when you get that letter. You have to adopt a resolution of intent to change, or hunker down and get ready to spend a lot of money to fight it. Once you adopt that resolution of intent to change, you then have 90 days, kind of a 90-day safe harbor to finish. And as long as you're in that 45 initial days or the next 90 days, the potential plaintiff can't sue, and they're locked into just that $32,000. During those 90 days, you have to do a lot. You have to hold two public hearings before you draft maps. Then you have to hold two public hearings about the draft maps, and then you can adopt the map. And those hearings can't be very close together because the maps have to be posted seven days before each hearing. So as Ms. Tilton mentioned, the timeline is tight, but we've actually done it on even faster timelines in a number of jurisdictions if you wanted to start now. And then there's a fifth hearing where you adopt the map, and it goes through the standard ordinance process. We have had a couple of battles about this. Modesto, Palmdale, you probably have read about Santa Clara, Santa Monica and Carson have all fought challenges. None of them have gone well. Carson is awaiting trial. All the others have lost at trial. Palmdale lost on appeal, and then Santa Monica and Santa Clara are up on appeal now. The challenge is that these are really expensive. Modesto and Palmdale each spent about $1.8 million on their defense, and that's on their defense. So even if they'd won, that money was gone. And then when Modesto lost, they had to pay the plaintiff's attorneys $3 million. Palmdale had to pay the plaintiff's attorneys $4.7. We thought that was shocking. And then came Santa Monica. Santa Monica had a, I think, a five-week trial. And they won't say how much they've spent, but they had spent $4 million before the, they admitted they had spent $4 million before the trial started. And at this point, they've spent somewhere between $6 and $10 million on their defense. And after they lost a trial, the plaintiffs have put in a request for $22 million in fees. So it's just astronomical amounts. The judge has not ruled on that. They did not get the $22 million yet. But that's why we're seeing just massive changes. And even jurisdictions that just missed that 90 days or missed that 45 days are getting hit with six-figure, in some cases, seven-figure settlements. So Highland, they actually wanted to debate in front of a judge about the remedy, and so they debated, they admitted liability and then fought over how to fix it, and paid $1.3 million and went and were ordered into districts. Anaheim, Whittier, both paid $1 million. Two worth noting in the middle, West Contra Costa Unified, they got a letter, they agendized adopting the resolution of intent, and then they changed their mind. And they actually voted down the resolution of intent. Instead of just pulling the agenda item, they actually voted no. Their 45 days ran out, they realized they'd made a mistake. On Thursday, they reagendized the resolution of intent to pass it, but their 45 days were up, and on Friday, they were sued. And then Tuesday, they adopted the resolution of intent. So missing that clock cost them $318,000. Camarillo, they got a letter in November, late October, November. They wrote back to the attorney of senate saying, "We're going to adopt the resolution, but it's the holidays. Is it okay if we do it in January, even though it's outside the 45 days?" He didn't respond, he sued them. They still adopted in January, they went to districts very quickly. But because they had missed that window, even though they had asked for an extension, they didn't get it in writing from the plaintiff's side, so they had to pay $233,000 in legal fees. So this is why we kind of, those windows are so important. Unless you get a plaintiff who is agreeable to extending them, you've got to hit those windows, unfortunately.
This next slide is just a snapshot of those city, of the number of cities that have been, have CVRA-driven transitions. So they have driven, basically been forced to switch from at-large elections. We can see there's over 130 cities, and in total, probably, we figure over 400 agencies that have had to switch as a result of the CVRA challenges, and there will be more. So there are rules in place that must be followed when you're going through a transition. There are federal rules, there are state rules, and then there are common redistricting principles that can be followed. So the overriding criterion is equal population. And the hitch here is that we must use the federal census data. So the last time a census was conducted was 2010. So if the city were to make the transition now, they'd be using the 2010 population numbers. Then every time a new census is completed, the city would adjust the borders so you'd have equal population. So after the census is conducted in 2020, and we have those numbers in 2021, then the city, if they converted now, would be looking to readjust the boundaries for the 2022 election. So, and all those cities that we've talked about that have made those transitions, as they will be doing in 2021 and 2022, is adjusting their boundaries for the November 2022 election. So equal population, and then following that, we must follow the Federal Voting Rights Act, so we can't draw boundaries in a way that would dilute racial or language minority voting rights. And there can be no racial gary mandarin, meaning that we cannot use race as the predominant or only criteria when we're drawing the boundaries. So we must be mindful of neighborhoods and communities of interest, and we're going to talk more in depth about that as we go through the process. You'll learn what to look for as far as communities of interest. And then the law just recently changed in January of this year. So the state legislature now has set a list of priorities that must be met when you are considering how the boundaries are drawn. And those are listed here, geographically contiguous. You can't have, you can't divide neighborhoods or local communities of interest. Easily identifiable boundaries, such as freeways, waterways, those types of things, and compactness as far as it's practical. After you've met the higher priorities, you can look at other traditional redistricting principles. One of those is respecting voters' wishes. That has to do with avoiding pairing of council members if it's possible to do so, and we've met the higher, the higher priority criteria. So if we can draw lines that don't pair council members, we try to present that option. And then oftentimes, we'll look at future population growth. It would not be a consideration now, but if you were doing it for the 2022, and you knew you were having, say, a large housing development that was going to be completed recently, you can consider that when you're doing the equal population.
So if you follow the process in some of the local cities, a traditional step in the process is to say, what are our communities of interest? And then, do they need to be kept together? Or should they actually benefit from multiple representation? Often, areas like downtown, commercial parks, those kinds of things actually, historically, have, it's been a benefit to divide them and have multiple council members representing them. The state kind of stepped in on that, and they said, for neighborhoods and what are defined under this provision of the code, communities of interest, you can't divide them. They have to be kept together as much as you possibly can. This is going to mess up a lot of cities, who have done that historically, and now, next year, won't be able to anymore. But there is still the ability to define non-neighborhood communities of interest. So it can be geographic areas, it can be anything commercial, you know. In your case, I was looking a little bit, you know, you've got the YouTube, that section that's very industrial, commercial, doesn't have any apartments in it. The area just north of it is difficult because it has apartments. But there are areas you can define as not being communities of interest, that as the law says, should be included within a single district for purposes of effective and fair representation. So there's still a little bit of wiggle room for non-neighborhood areas that you might want to have multiple representatives. But the law very heavily pushes towards uniting these areas. But we can look at them. Traditionally, we would look at them based on commercial centers, that kind of thing. But again, neighborhoods, we would also want to identify, but those now, the law says you have to keep them together as much as you possibly can. The other big challenge in going to district elections is sequencing. This is deciding which districts come up in which year. It will be the same number of districts as are currently on that cycle, so two each year generally, and then the mayor would stay on the usual cycle. There is a clause in the law that's very vague that says the governing body should give special consideration to the purposes of CVRA. It's a somewhat vague thing. Essentially, it means if you have a low turnout district that's heavily Latino, or heavily African American, or heavily Asian American, then that low turnout district should probably be in the presidential cycle. So when the next election is the presidential cycle, it's fairly clear what you want to do. If you're doing this for the first time in 2021, we run into this really interesting dilemma of, often those areas want to be up for election as soon as possible, so they can win their seat in the next election. But that would lock their relatively low turnout district into the gubernatorial cycle. So if you're doing this in 2021, then you have to wrestle with, is special consideration of the purposes of law, putting them on the high turnout presidential year, or putting them up as soon as possible? And that's, there's no right answer to that. It also gets very complicated if council members are in separate seats. So if each year, council members ends up in a separate seat, which, as Ms. Tilton mentioned, is now harder than it used to be because that is a very, very low criterion, then it's easy. The districts are assigned to the years that those council members are up. It's when you get two council members in one seat, especially if they're on a different cycle. So if we get a 2022 council member and a 2024 council member in the same seat, then this gets very complicated and can get contentious. This decision is made by the council, unless you've handed off the decision-making process to an advisory commission that then reports to you with recommendations, or you can actually give it to an independent commission. The challenge is the independent commission process can't really fit in 90 days. So the independent commissions are going to be much more common amongst jurisdictions redistricting in 2021 that have more time than they will be amongst jurisdictions that are doing this for the first time, either now or in 2021. You may have seen Menlo Park had an advisory commission. We jammed it into 90 days. It was wild. It actually limited how many community outreach efforts we could make, because you had to train the commission and get them organized and get that all done in that same time period. But it ended up, everyone was very happy with the process there because they had a very representative commission. So those are options, but they are very difficult to do for the first time around. Yeah, so I think I already covered this, but those are your three options. It is worth noting, if you talk to other council members, the independent commission option was not an option for general law cities until, really, this year. It used to be that it had to come back to the council, the council had to adopt the ordinance, but the state passed a new law that allows you to delegate essentially the ability to pass an ordinance to an independent commission.
So now we get to the part I think is the most exciting part, is the whole transition process, when we work with the city to engage the public, is, we have a very robust program that allows the public to actually participate at every level of the process. And we call that our three E's. So we engage the public, we educate the public, and we empower the public. And there's a number of ways we can do that. We can do that through actually holding community meetings, community forums, do it during the public setting here, public hearings. But what we're really looking from, from the community, is for them to tell us what their neighborhoods look like, what makes sense for them. Sometimes, it won't, it won't be clear to us when we're looking at just the demographics, that maybe there's a particular neighborhood of, say, you have a strong Filipino community, and they shop at this particular center, and they identify as one, as one particular area. That's something that we, we wouldn't be able to know unless we hear from the community. So we work very closely with city staff and with other community leaders to get the word out, to try to get people to come and comment and describe to us what their neighborhoods look like, neighborhoods that fit together, neighborhoods that don't fit together, neighborhoods that share similar interests, and maybe neighborhoods that have very different needs and desires. So, and we have various templates that we can provide and samples we can provide to the city, and flyers, and, and different ways to get the word out through social media and other endeavors. We have some public participation tools, and the very simplest of options is to allow the public to draw their own maps. And the public really likes this, because rather than just say yes or no whether they like a map that was presented to them, they have the opportunity to actually draw their own maps and submit them. If a member of the public draws a map, whether they draw it on a cocktail napkin, or one of our kits that I'll describe here, we take that map and we professionally produce it. So it will look like every other map, the draft maps that NDC has prepared, or any of the other maps that have been submitted. They all look the same. With each map, there will be demographic data that's included, and that data will provide information about each of the districts within the map. So there will be four columns that will give various information, such as the citizen voting age population. You'll hear that often referred to as C-VAP, Citizen Voting Age Population. Those are residents who are 18 years of age and eligible to vote. Oftentimes, the courts will look at the C-VAP to determine the strength of your protected class for a particular district. It also gives information such as housing status, education levels, income levels, language spoken at home, immigration status. Those types of informations are provided for each of the maps. Those types of informations are, are provided for each of the maps, whether it's submitted by a member of the public or by NDC. We typically just assign a number to the map, so it's not even apparent who submitted the map. So it could be a member of the public, or it could be one that we, we have produced. Oftentimes, we'll, we'll point out the ones that NDC has produced. And largely, we'll produce those maps after we see what's been submitted by the public, and we kind of round out the options for council. So on the right, you're seeing in a paper kit, this one is not the boundaries for San Bruno, but for another jurisdiction, I believe this is Pacifica. But what we do is provide this paper kit or PDF, in PDF form, so that folks can actually draw the boundaries and reach equal population in each of their four districts. So it's really small on the screen, but we've combined census blocks and added up the population per census block, so one could just draw a map and get to the desired population level, which will just be roughly over 10,000 for each of the four districts. Once maps are submitted, we have an interactive map viewer. So those maps will be uploaded, and anyone from any web browser could look at those maps online. So whether it's produced by us or a member of the public, that map will also be online, and you can zoom in very closely at the street level to see particularly where those lines are drawn. Folks will also use this interactive review map to help draw their lines. So if you can't quite see where all the streets are, or not sure where all the streets are on the right, you could bring up this interactive map viewer and zoom in very closely to see where you want your lines drawn for your particular districts. That's a simple option for public participation. Many cities have chosen to also include our more powerful options. One of those is an Excel spreadsheet that you use along with your paper map. If you want to get some more, have the Excel do the computation for you as far as the population. So you, each of those population units that I just showed on the other screen would be assigned a number, and you can plug that into the Excel spreadsheet. It will give you information on total population, the citizen voting age population, and some voter registration information. And then the most powerful tool is our online mapping tool. We're the, we're the, we're the only provider of the online mapping tool for residents. And what the, members of the public can actually draw their own maps and use the same type of tools that we use as professional demographers. So with that, you can get more detailed information on the demographics of each of the sections, and you're able to adjust your lines easily and see, and make various versions of your maps. So it's, it's a, there's a learning curve to it, but once you get it, folks like it. We'll find people often submit more than one map, and, and also the process allows you to share draft maps. So members of the public would maybe create three or four and offer to share them out to the public, so someone could take someone else's map and say, and actually revise it, say, I like this part about it, but I don't like this part about it. So that, these processes often really create positive feelings towards the process and, and let the public know that they can participate at every level, and every level is fully transparent. We don't weed out any of the maps. So all the maps that are submitted, even if they are not legally compliant, we will still produce those. We will put a caution or warning on there saying this map is not contiguous, or not population balanced, or doesn't have the right number of districts. So you, that will be identifiable, that you could not adopt that map in its present form, but it will still be produced, so we don't screen out any of the maps that are, that are sent to us. Here's a snapshot of some of those who've used that online mapping tool. I don't have the figures for those that have used just the Excel spreadsheet and the, and the paper kit, but you'll see that we get various results. 37 in orange. It's, it seems that some, some of these really take, take off once they start getting the hang of it, and you'll see groups start to form and they get together. We can even have workshops if you have, where we can allow people to bring their laptops, and we can walk them through and show them how to do the toolkit. There are various tutorials online. We have a paper, one-page paper cheat sheet to help folks use the online tool. And then, once I, once they're submitted, they're produced by NDC, we post them online seven days in advance before the council considers them. And at the first public hearing, once the council can consider maps, the first two are just for input on the maps. The third map, this one, council can start to deliberate on the maps. If we get several maps, say if we, like the city of Orange, we have, you know, 40 maps, NDC will present them to you in ways, we will categorize them into maps that have very similar characteristics. So we must, we'll, we'll say, such as, you know, this particular map has, it's District 1, the entirely east of El Camino, or whatever common factors there are in each of the maps, so that you can narrow down those focus maps to, say, two, three, four maps that you like the most, and then maybe offer suggestions to how to change those maps, and we would make those changes, as well as the public can offer suggestions to changing the focus maps, and then ultimately, council would decide on the determining map. So this is the, this is the last slide of our presentation where we talk about the options. And as you can understand, doing it for 2020, there are advantages and disadvantages. If the city were to go ahead and adopt a resolution of intention, you would ultimately save the $32,000, provided that you complete it within the prescribed timeframe. So that would be 90 days after you adopt your resolution of intention, and in our case, would be a little bit shorter, so that we tried to meet the registrar's deadline of June 1st. The council would need to decide whether you want to keep it council-driven or to employ an advisory or independent commission. Again, if it's, if you do an advisory commission, it would be difficult to do an independent commission. That does create some extra crunch to try to get an advisory commission in place that would be, would be difficult. I'm not sure if it would be impossible, but it would be difficult. Or you could also adopt a resolution of intention, but designate 2022 as your election date. So you would have your resolution of intention in place. You could, would save the, the $32,000, you would be protected from the $32,000. However, you could receive a letter from an attorney saying, no, we don't agree that 2022 is, is the correct transition date, and would compel you to do it by November of 2020. So then you'd be back either trying to settle that or to try to get it done for 2020. We're getting close to that timeframe, so we're not sure if that would happen, but we do want to mention that that's a possibility, and it has happened in, in another jurisdiction, at least one other jurisdiction. The other options are to wait, to wait and, for a letter to change, and then having received the information that you received today and moving forward as soon as the letter is received, so you, that you can meet those deadlines. Or wait to receive a letter and then do some further analysis and some consultation with your city attorney regarding the legal risks of either taking action or not taking action. That concludes my presentation. You have any more to add? And we'll have to answer any questions.
Anything else from staff?
No, that concludes our report for the moment.
Thank you all. Bring it to, Vicki, we had some speaker cards? If council's okay, can we take the speaker cards in case they wanted to go home?
First speaker is Arus Harmon.
Good evening, Council. Arus Harmon from Bel Air and on the Planning Commission. This topic of election methods happens to be something I have been interested in, cared about for 20 years, have studied academically and was involved in lobbying for adopting a platform plank of the California Democratic Party favoring reforming election methods to make our government system more representative of the people. I am generally in agreement with both the impetus to do something because of the threat of these lawsuits. I had a conversation with, I believe it was Ian Bain from the Redwood City Council. They faced a similar problem recently. So I absolutely understand the urgency of this. And I also agree that at-large districts, though the way that we currently conduct elections are fundamentally unfair, because you can have a situation in which you have, you know, four or five candidates up, 51% of the voters essentially agree on two of them, the other 49% do not like them so much, and the 51% wins. This is fundamentally a tyranny of the majority problem. Unfortunately, districts do not solve this problem, because many of these sorts of differences in interest can be distributed in a way that is impossible to district around barring truly ludicrous gerrymandering. If you have sort of differences of opinion among young and old, people that are sort of ideologically different, conservative versus liberal, those can be widely distributed. And even with racial demographics, you know, certainly we have some neighborhoods that are more concentrated one way or another, but the fact is that demographically, we're, we're distributed. Worse, districting may actually deepen conflict in our community. You often hear about the sort of east-side, west-side split in our city that, you know, I personally live on what seems to be the wrong side of the tracks, and I think if you did divide the city into districts, you might find that you have two districts on the east side and three on the west side. And to the extent that that division is real, you now have a permanently locked-in minority in the side that has felt itself disadvantaged. I believe the solution here is that we do say we want to lock in a intent to do something, but the something is not districts, the something is to adopt a proportional method, even if that means we need to get some sort of minimal charter that incorporates the general code by reference and establishes a new voting method. And I, being interested in this, I am a donor to the Center for Election Science, which is a nonpartisan research group that helps promote better elections, and their Chair of the Board kindly joined us this evening.
Next is Felix Sargent.
Perfect timing.
It's always nice to have an introduction. Hi, my name's Felix Sargent. I'm the Chair of the Board for the Center for Election Science. We're a nonprofit group. We are nationally based, and we study and advocate for better voting methods. We, we try to encompass all voting methods, so literally, if you can think of it, we've probably seen it, even something such as random elections, pick people from random, random personnel of the population. How well does that work? How well does that satisfy voters? How well does it work with making sure that various different minorities, whether ethnic, whether just simply in difference of opinion, young or old, are they represented properly? Here, I'm here to advocate for adopting proportional approval voting. Now, proportional approval voting is very useful for you in that you don't actually have to change the voting machines that you use. You can work using existing voting machines, only thing that changes is the tabulation method. Now, I understand that San Bruno is a general law city, so I understand that there are the immediate limitations that you would need to be able to have a city charter in order to be able to adopt this. But I want you to know that there are options which can solve the question of how the council is composed completely, and, and thoughtfully, and make sure that there is complete proportional representation for every single seat, so that every voter has a fair choice for who represents them on the city council without cutting up the city into various different portions. The way that this works, and excuse me if this gets a bit mathy, is that on a ballot, rather than choose one, it's choose as many as you like. Who are the candidates that you feel represent you? Then all of those ballots are counted up, the person with the most votes gets the first seat. The, everyone who didn't vote for that candidate, everyone who has not been yet satisfied, their voting weight doubles. So it means that they now get, they get, they get a chance to make sure that someone's on the council. Now, that might not be enough to change the results, but when the next person goes up, everything gets reweighted. People who haven't yet had their, had their choice, their vote doubles again. The way that this works out, in the long math of it, and believe me, I have slides, is that it all ends up proportional, and that everyone gets fair representation without dividing the city into districts, without having to create another form of redlining. Happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Felix. We'll call you up if we need you. Next speaker.
Next is Plymouth Ansbergs.
Plymouth?
Hi, I'll keep this relatively brief because I'm sure everybody here knows. I'm married to Arus, and we talk about all this stuff. So everything that he said, I just wanted to add, I'm, I'm also in support of something more like proportional representation. It really seems like it's going to solve the problem that we're trying to solve much better. I was really disappointed in that presentation to see alternative voting, alternative voting methods got one line, it was, oh, we can't do that right now. Well, we can. But just in support of the idea that districting doesn't, doesn't solve the problem, this is from an article I looked up today, I can send the link later. In 2001, a study of California school boards examined Latinx representation, including a large-scale survey of candidates. They find that, at the very least, perceptions about at-large elections are barriers to entry for Latinx candidates. At the same time, those same researchers, using 2004, 2005 data, found that Latinx representation in school boards is no greater in district-based systems. So we're being told that we have a problem, or potentially have a problem, with racial representation, and the solution that's being proposed doesn't solve the problem.
Thank you, Plymouth. Next?
Next is Jeffrey Tong.
Jeffrey.
Honorable Mayor and City Council Members, I'm Jeffrey Tong, and I'm almost a lifelong San Bruno resident. Most of my life, San Bruno was like a brucolic city, but since 2010, San Bruno has suffered from the Crestmore gas explosion. It's now 2020. Since then, San Bruno Police Department and Fire Department has handled numerous crises which San Bruno people are eternally grateful for, but let's not tax them to, to the limit. We need to prepare for unprecedented challenges ahead which require the support of a unified community. We need to present a stronger and more supportive community starting today. Please don't just have district elections, we need to have nine districts. Why? Nine districts, not five, not seven. San Bruno has nine natural districts according to the census, and each needs to have roughly the same population. We need nine district council members, not to polarize the people of San Bruno, and not because the existing five council members don't care about the entire city. We need nine times the existing crime prevention committees, nine times the emergency preparedness committees, and each council member need to be accountable for his or her district. Imagine somebody is living alone, and he's missing. We need somebody to check up on every house. You know, this is like being a captain of a ship with 5,000 passengers. It's a full-time job. But nine council members requires that San Bruno become a chartered city. Essentially, it's a city constitution, and that requires the vote of the people. Demographics. Community is coming together, we already know our city, just like the walk-in bike plan, we can implement fast. So please adopt the resolution now to support charter city with nine districts, district councils, and one at-large mayor on the November 2020 ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Is there anybody in the audience that hasn't spoke that wishes to? Okay. If nothing else on the report, then we'll bring it back to council for questions through our presenters and our follow-up. I know it's a lot.
I'll start with the first call. I mean, I think if you go back to our options, there's four of them, which, two of them were do nothing and wait. I think we're all probably in agreement up here that doing nothing is not an option. All right, we can't wait to be sued. I think that we need to be more proactive. And I just think that there's a lot to do in a short amount of time. I don't want to rush into anything, and I think that we need to get the residential input and the time to have the right meetings and the right solution. So I, I simply vote for postponing this to later.
To the Chair? So I don't like to feel like I'm being bullied, and this feels like I'm being bullied. And it's, I think it's a fascinating discussion about how this all plays out, and I've heard a lot And I've heard a lot of great comments from the public about how different voting methods can work and why this may or may not work for us. But the bottom line for me is, I don't understand what problem we're trying to fix by doing this. And I know that, well, I guess the problem is that the problem we're trying to fix is we don't want to get sued. But it really should be, how do we fairly represent the voters of San Bruno? And I don't see how slicing and dicing where people live and where people can vote is going to really improve anything. I don't see that there is a problem that exists that this breaking up into districts is going to resolve. So I have a fundamental problem with saying, yeah, let's launch headlong into this. And there's been a lot of other things that have been proposed. Other council members suggested, maybe let's rotate the mayor. So if we have a rotating mayor, that means now we have five districts, not four, and so then that needs to be recalculated. With the census coming up, that's going to change things again. I'm curious why some cities were willing to spend millions of dollars to fight this. And I'm wondering if there's not some really good reasons for not wanting to do this. And I don't know, it's kind of held out there as a sort of a threat, as like this could become very, very expensive. But at the same time, somebody thought it was worth the money. And I'm just wondering what kind of problems they anticipated creating and what sort of problems we will create by going down this route. So I'm not really comfortable in doing it. I don't think 90 days is nearly enough time for us to process this. I mean, if judges that are experts in law can't figure out the statistics, do we really expect our typical resident to absorb all of this and make a sound decision over five meetings? I mean, I don't know that that's even fair to them to impose that on them. And, you know, so we'll come back with a lot of data, and at the end it'll all say basically, this is how you need to divide it, and we'll have to accept that at the end of 90 days. And it could potentially create, like I said, a number of different issues that we don't really need. So I'm really hesitant. I don't want the city to get sued, but at the same time, I don't want to launch headlong into something that I don't really know that is going to provide a benefit to the city. So that's kind of where I sit right now. I'm also wondering about the school district, and if they're in the same predicament, could they potentially be sued? And if any work that, if we do end up doing this, could they benefit from the same analysis? Or would they have to do their own separately? Is it something that we could sort of join forces on?
I stress that. The actual process of moving to district elections, if that's the action you take, because their boundaries are not the exact same, and their population numbers are different, and thanks to the state legislature, now they have different criteria. The actual mapping, there's not much overlap. There's some public testimony about communities of interest that might be useful for both, but the actual mapping process, there's not much to gain from joining. Now, if you wanted to do analysis of liability analysis and polarized voting numbers, that there may be some overlap that could be savings from that. But that would be the place where you could find some savings, if both jurisdictions wanted to do that kind of study.
Okay.
And to your first question, yes, they are vulnerable. I know we've worked with Cabrillo and the high school, Sequoia High and others, and Redwood City Elementary that have all had gotten letters and had to switch.
Okay. Could you answer his question, though? Why some cities fought so hard and spent so much money? Was it just because they thought that they could win? Is it that they were just against being, quote, "bullied," or being put in this position?
Yeah, Modesto was very early. So the law passed in 2002, and they got sued in 2002, I think. And they actually won in spirit court. They argued simply, was the law constitutional? They didn't argue the facts specific to Modesto. They won in spirit court, then they lost on appeal. Then everyone knew the case was headed to the US Supreme Court, so the state Supreme Court just affirmed the ruling. And then, for internal political reasons, Modesto decided to drop it and to go to districts. So unfortunately, they set, we thought they had a decent chance of winning, but then they set a very bad precedent, because now the state Supreme Court has affirmed the constitutionality of this law. Palmdale was very angry about the allegations. They actually had had a Latino on the council for quite some time, and the Latino who lost that the plaintiffs were citing had not raised any money, had not appeared at campaign events. They were fairly outraged. But they got trounced because the judge said none of that was relevant. Actually, the witness who was going to testify that the Latino who lost didn't raise any money wasn't allowed to testify even, because the judge said, no, it's just the regression analysis. It doesn't matter, they didn't run a campaign. So that kind of set the stage early on. And then that really set the stage for everyone else to switch, because that $4.7 million intimidated a lot. Santa Monica, they're Santa Monica. They are a very wealthy city and very progressive, and were very offended by this, and decided to spend a lot of money to go all the way. It is kind of nice for all the other cities, because if they win, they will have won for everybody, depending on what basis they win on. But they are spending a fortune. Palm Springs is the other one. You may be aware, in 2016, I think it was, Palm Springs got all this national attention because they had the first all openly gay council elected that way. So CNN came to town, did a big story. They were getting all this news about being so progressive, and about a month into their term, they got hit with a CBRA letter saying, "You're a bunch of racists, you need to switch your elections." They were very offended. It was a very weak letter. All they could really cite was some high schoolers who painted some graffiti as proof of racism. But when they looked at the dollar amounts, they switched and went to district elections. So Santa Monica, I think, is fairly unique in their situation. The others were building and thought they had a case, and once they lost on their points, then the others kind of knew that that wasn't really something they could win on.
Is there any evidence anywhere that the cities that already had districts were somehow more fair?
It's a mixed bag. I mean, you touched on a little bit about sometimes districts are great. You know, I grew up in Apotos down the coast, and when Watsonville went to districts, it really invigorated that city, and it's been phenomenal. Other cities' districts have been a fairly clear disaster. It all depends on how they're drawn and how the council works and who's elected, and whether you become balkanized and polarized, or if it brings new representation. There are certainly jurisdictions that brought new representation. You know, if you look at all the jurisdictions that have switched, a small handful of them, the challenges came from Maldef or from the Asian Pacific League and those kinds of groups. And in those jurisdictions, you saw grassroots people who had run and never been elected. A community base, you would have 50 people at the meetings. And in those jurisdictions, you can definitely see there was a jump in representation. The overwhelming majority of jurisdictions are getting these letters, we call it carpet bombing, from private attorneys. There's no one, no local advocate for it, and we see very little difference in those jurisdictions. So a lot of it depends on where the letter came from, because that tells you a lot about what's going on in that jurisdiction. So in some cases, though, it has been great and really led to change, but in most, it's not led to much change.
All right. Thank you. I know we went through the speaker cards, but Jennifer, I mean, you've been with us this long, the hour, you deserve to talk.
Well, I apologize. I actually was just standing on, sitting back and watching the show. Jennifer Blanco, I'm actually on the school board trustee for San Bruno Park School District, and I think that's something that we should look into with the two city governances. I know that in the past, we've had, where we had a joint meeting with the school board and with the city council once upon a time, but that event stopped years ago. And I know myself, another colleague of mine on the board, we've been asking to have, so we have a joint advisory committee, that's what we call it on the board, the city council calls it something different, where you have the superintendent, you have the city manager, two members of your council, two members from our school board meet. I know that we had plans previously to have quarterly meetings, but those since stopped...
To the district elections.
So what I'm thinking is, again, I would like to ask, so that we can move forward with having, resume such conversations. There's a lot of things in the city that we have that cross over each other, and this obviously is one of them. But I think having those conversations are very important, especially now, and I know that this is something that most likely will be coming down our pike as well. So I'm just going to ask our city council, let's make that meeting happen. Usually, the two members of our board is the president and the vice president, and whoever comes from the city council is whoever you all decide on that committee. So I, myself as a board member, would be more than happy to have that conversation with our city council.
Thank you, Jennifer. Oh, I'm sorry. Back to council. Were you done with your questions?
I think I'm done.
Marty?
I'm ready. I had a question first. To do proportional voting, that has to be a charter city?
Yeah, maybe we can ask our consultant to talk about...
So the question is, is because it came up, as Councilman Medina's asking, came up about the charter city obviously goes to the vote of the people. So if you could help respond to his questions.
Yes, after charter, there was a bill last year or a year before... Yeah, that would have allowed cumulative voting and other options for general law cities. It passed the legislature, but the governor vetoed it. So right now, you're limited to, as a general law city, to those options, and you'd have to write a charter to do anything else.
Got it. All right. Thank you. I'm clear on that now, and I'm interested in pursuing a charter and talking about that, but today's not the time to talk about that. Today, we're going to deal with the problem we're facing, and that's being sued or being By the way, I also am interested in trying to work with the school district in handling this problem of what we can save by working together. But I understand that the voters are different in the district. It makes it a little confusing, but if there are savings there, I'm all for that. So we're dealing with this legal problem, and it doesn't make sense for me that we proceed with the change for this 2020 election when we're going to be dealing with having to likely, with the census data being updated, to have to look at it again. So that kind of seems like a waste of time, resources. So I am in favor of being proactive with the resolution now for the 2022 election. I also understand that council will be talking about, potentially talking about term limits at a future meeting of determining on how we set up agendas and talk about things that are important to different council members. So I'm interested in term limits and a rotating mayor. And so I just want to throw that out there before we get too far down the road, and maybe when we need to have that discussion to not get too far ahead between having four districts and one at-large to having five districts. So those are my comments, and it's just unfortunate, once again, you know, we're facing something that we really have to either make a move or pay a penalty or a lawsuit, so.
Did you say that the law passed in 2002?
Correct.
Okay. So I just want to be clear that we're not really then being proactive 18 years later. We're being reactive to the potential threat of lawsuit. Is that, that's my understanding? Right. So I think the next question I had was, how was the National Demographics Corporation for Districting Services selected?
So Javon Grogan, City Manager. Let me begin by stating that this item was brought to council jointly by the city manager, the city clerk, and the city attorney with no recommendation. We really thought that it was important to inform you guys, so you have the ability to make an informed decision. District elections is a very challenging topic for every city council that has addressed it. And what we know is that it is progressively increasing. Yes, the law was passed in the early 2000s. Increasingly, cities are getting letters, and we thought that it was pertinent to schedule this item to inform the city council, so you can, at the end of the day, whatever decision the city council make, make an informed decision. Two vendors were looked at to be here tonight to educate the city council on this law and what's happening throughout the state of California and throughout our county with Burlingame having just received a letter. Of the two firms that we looked at, we really looked for a firm that had significant experience working with local governments. The one firm, other firm that we looked at, I'm actually blanking on their name, but they presented at the League of California Cities New City Council Member Training that Linda, you and I attended. It was the other gentleman, I'm blanking on his name. But of the two firms, one had significant experience with cities, the other had significant experience, having worked for some cities, but also having worked for a lot of special districts. What was most important, we thought, and which is why National Demographic Corporation is here tonight, is because they responded with the ability to execute should the city council decide to go and undertake a 90-day process and make the change in November, for the November 2020 election. And so we thought that it was important to have a vendor that had the time and the ability to execute, really to provide the city council with not only full information, but a vendor that had the ability to execute should you choose option number one. But again, there is no recommendation from staff on this. It was really provided in the city council with information.
So is the, so the $45,000, was it part of the budget for this year?
No. So this item came up due to our knowledge that cities around us are increasingly receiving letters and the potentiality of essentially turning a, what could be a $40,000 to $45,000 contract to a $70,000 to $75,000 contract if we wait to receive a letter. And so this is not a budgeted item, so should the city council choose option one, what is written into that resolution is the appropriation of $45,000 from fund balance to fund this effort. So this is not a budgeted effort, this is not a pre-planned effort, but it is one that the city could undertake should it choose to.
And then a question for the consultants is, of the cities that have switched over because they were compelled to switch, were any of them in deficits?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Certainly, cities, school districts, doing this job in 2008 was very depressing, because there were 50 school districts you were working with, and there would be, how many teachers are we laying off this year? And then NDC's project on drawing lines, and most of these jurisdictions, as we mentioned, is kind of a waste of money, but they had to do it. So yes, there have been, across the spectrum, that the plaintiffs' attorneys doing the carpet bombing don't really care about the status. But yeah, with 130 cities, they've been all different kinds.
So would there be, I guess from your experience, if we took the route to, I guess to intend, I just would feel more comfortable if this was budgeted as part of the priority session and part of next year's budget, as opposed to taking it out when we just found out we have a $4 million deficit? So if we were to resolve to place this as a priority in our budget next year and actually analyze the various options, including a charter, potential charter amendment to become a charter city, then depending on what the council decides as to whether we'd like to become a charter city or not, then it seems like there's a slew of new options, right?
Well, there's two pieces of this. One is that there are other voting systems that do address the empowering the protected class. But the California Voting Rights Act ignores that. So if you do any other system other than districts, you're vulnerable to a challenge. The Maldefs, the voting rights groups understand the other systems, and will listen to you and talk to you about that, and are open to them. These other attorneys are generally not. So they can still, the law's very specific, unless you're purely... Unless you're purely by districts or now by districts with an at-large mayor, you're vulnerable to a challenge, whatever system you have. It does reduce the risk because, like I said, you'll address the voting rights groups' concerns if you have a good system. But it doesn't eliminate the threat of getting one of these letters, unfortunately. And you certainly can hold off. There are a number of jurisdictions that have done the proactive for 2022. There's always the risk, as we mentioned, of getting a letter in the meantime. But until two weeks ago, no one had been hit with that. And then Ontario just got a demand letter. They voted to switch in 2022, and they got sued 10 days ago. So that, but of the probably 12 or 15 cities that did that proactive for a future election, they're the first to get popped, unfortunately.
They're the first to get?
To get popped. They got hit with a letter and a lawsuit even though they had voted to switch for the future election.
Okay. I just, I feel like we have this deficit. And we just had this meeting about staff needs. And I'd love for $45,000 to give the planning department a part-time management analyst so that they can help bring in revenue on the development side as opposed to spending money to maybe save $30,000 that wasn't budgeted or to help the Florida Park Project. I mean, I just, I have a hard time making a decision of a couple of pages, a presentation we saw tonight that's going to impact the entire city for the next, you know, 30, 40, 50 years until the law changes again. And so I would ask that this be brought back to us at the next council meeting and that we maybe get more information in the meantime. I just feel like this is a very big decision for the council to make tonight.
Just to clarify, I think your comments, you're very well taken. So this is a study session. Are you asking then for another study session with more information before we even come back to make a decision?
I actually believe we should be having a closed session with legal counsel involved on this topic.
I don't know, because we haven't had litigation. So I don't know that we can go into closed session on this topic. City attorney?
So I think it would be important for me not to comment on what we might or might not talk about in a closed session. So I think that unfortunately, you know, we don't like being in this position really any more than you do. This wasn't on staff's work program. We don't really want it to be on staff's work program, frankly, with everything else there is to do. But as I mentioned earlier, this only came up out of an abundance of trying to protect city resources and an understanding that you have a deficit. So the last thing the city council might want to do is to incur the risk of having more of a deficit when you either get a letter or get sued because you're not doing it quickly enough. So that's the reason why it came to you without a recommendation. But I think you can understand from, you know, both my comments, city manager's comments, and the comments of the consultant that despite the fact that this may not be, district elections may not be the perfect voting system. We understand there are consultants out there that think otherwise. And I think that's also a demonstration of the fact, if there was any question about whether there's going to be a debate about, from the experts, I think you witnessed that tonight just in our short meeting that we've had. So I think the important thing for the city council to focus on tonight is determining what is the level of risk that the city council would like to take. And if you go with option one, there's relatively no or little risk so long as you comply with those timelines. So option one is really the option that results in the least amount of risk for the city. Option two results in slightly more risk to the city because I think, as the consultants have indicated, you still have the possibility that you might get a letter saying that you need to go to these elections in 2020 and not in 2022. So if that's the case, you'll be back here paying the consultant, paying the attorney $32,000 for their letter and then in the same position as you are right now, trying to make a decision. One of the things I don't know, and I'll just say from, maybe the consultant knows the answer to this, is whether, was it, who was the city that just got sued?
Ontario.
Ontario. Did they get the letter? And then did the city say no? And then they got sued? What was the sequence of events?
Yeah, they got the letter and they adopted a resolution intent saying they would switch for 2022. And so Malibu also did something interesting. They got a letter and they actually negotiated with the potential plaintiff to say, can we put it on the ballot this November? They also hired the plaintiff's team to help them kind of draft maps. So there's some money going over there now. So that was an interesting approach. So once you get a letter, you do have some, you know, flexibility, depending on who sent you the letter. I would add too, though, I wouldn't do, I wouldn't recommend just a series of study sessions just because it might attract attention. You might, if you want to do another study session, either focus entirely on charter options or wait until summer when it's clearly too late for anyone to hit you for this year.
So just quickly, I'm sorry, going back to the Ontario example. So it seems like that's the case in which the city received a letter, said, no, we want to do it in 2022, and then they were sued right away, right? You don't get a second letter saying, okay, we'll give you a chance to do it in 2020. They just got sued. So as soon as that happens, then the price of the settlement goes up to some six-figure number just by virtue of the lawsuit. So I think that's, that appears to me, unless I'm missing something, to be the risk of selecting option number two. And of course, the risks for the other options are exponentially greater, as I think we've seen.
Where is this $30,000 coming from? So you get a letter and you hand over $30,000? I mean, it seems like it's an automatic. Can you, can you explain that a little further?
Yeah, until 2015, there wasn't any $30,000, but there was also no waiting period. So the plaintiffs would send a letter. And typically, you know, they'd give you some time to react. But then in December, they sent San Juan Capistrano a letter December 20th, and they sued them January 4th, saying, we gave you 14 days over the holiday, and that was enough. And that, it was going too far. And the legislature finally woke up and stepped in. And what they negotiated was this, you get 45 days plus 90 days, safe harbor. But in exchange for that safe harbor, the plaintiff's attorneys got, get $30,000. They have to back it up with hours, but somehow they're always able to for sending the letter.
Okay, that helps. Thank you.
Okay, if I can, I think it's important to address Councilmember Mason's question about another study session. And I want to reiterate a piece that was in Mr. Johnson's presentation about public engagement. So this entire process, no matter when the city council decides to do it for 2020 or look at it for 2022, is all about public engagement. So the decision to look into it and hire a demographer really begins that public engagement process. And so over the course of 90 days, there are five public meetings that have to occur and robust public engagement around the topic. And then at the end of that process, the city council has a decision point. Are we going to district elections or are we not? And so I think with the item that's before you, if you were to choose option number one, we added an additional $5,000 in there with the thought that there would, there potentially may need to be additional community meetings, community mailers, and things like that. And so we did provide, the quote from NDC was for $40,000. And that extra five is essentially a contingency for additional community outreach. But I just wanted to point that out, that no matter when the council decides to look into the matter, that launches a very, very robust community engagement process.
Do the chair.
Michael. It seems unusual to me that we would have a study session that included an action like a resolution. So I would support Councilmember Mason's request that we bring this back at another meeting, not necessarily as a study session, but a decision on that resolution, I think, should come back at another, at our next meeting.
Marty.
I just wanted to provide a little bit of background. I remember hearing about this at the League of Cities Dinner where one of the council members from another city came up and said, hey, there's this bunch of lawyers running around. If they could send you a letter, you know, they're going to, you're going to have to pay $30,000. And I was kind of like, okay, you know, like, really? Who's at fault over here in San Bruno? It's just, this isn't a surprise. It's being proactive to the lawsuit. For me, it's going to be one or two, and I would, for these options up here. To do nothing is, I think, is wrong. This is, this would, I would think, provide some ammunition for the lawyer now to say, well, they had an opportunity, Judge, on the night, and they pushed it back. You know, they're dragging their feet. So I want to see us take action on this. I think that we're taking on additional risk of, it's going to cost us more. How the district is determined, you know, let the public or whatever. I'll stay out of that. That's not my interest. I'm here to serve everybody, but let the people decide. We can talk about charter city later on, but we need to be proactive here. We need to protect ourselves here. So I'm waiting to hear from the two other colleagues that are hopefully going to agree.
This council is one of the most diverse councils on the peninsula. And I mean, I'm looking, I'm looking at the faces up here. And I can't imagine how anybody could argue that we do not have representation from the city on this council. So, I mean, it's just wrong on every level. And for us to just jump down there and just, you know, we stood up to Verizon because we didn't feel what they were doing to our residents was right. We knew there was a potential. We ended up paying some money. But I believe we did the right thing then, and I think we need to do the right thing now. And I don't think charging down this road is the right thing at this point.
The only thing I'll say is on the proactive, it is in a way because we know that there's 20 jurisdictions in our county. And how many have taken action? How many have brought it before a meeting? They bring it because they're compelled. They have to, and make it, it was Redwood City, Ian was discussed. They got a letter. They figured, do we fight it or do we go with it? What do we have to lose? Burlingame is now facing that. Now they get to, I know they get to go in closed session because they have litigation. But theirs was not about Latin, what they received notice on, from my understanding. Had to do it with another ethnic group. So, you know, something can be found on any group. I know some, I got an email from a resident who said, well, two of us live on the east side, so we're fine here. Well, it's not about that per se. It's about what they're talking about, ethnic and fairness and distribution. So the concern I have, though, too, is, you know, we can sit back. And I talked to a couple of colleagues, and I won't mention cities, but off the air I will. But, but I mean, honestly, they haven't gotten a letter, and they're waiting. Well, we can have that kind of leadership if we want. Or do we do something that protects us? Because when we do get the letter, are we all thinking that, okay, we get a letter, we spend 32, and we're now going to hire somebody, firm, whoever's firm, 40, 45? I've heard, was brought up about the school district, but those may not be comparable maps. So in essence, I don't know if you can share that cause. I guess it's a quick thing that can be checked out. And maybe the school district doesn't want to do that. I don't know. Obviously, the college district does have that. I believe the high school district, I believe, does not. Obviously, the county supervisors do have that. Of course, the county's a large, large place. So, yeah, and they are. What I was amazed is I didn't realize Pacifica. That surprised me. Pacifica, Half Moon Bay. So when people are saying, I've heard, well, you know, we're not large enough city. Well, those cities are half our population, and they've been compelled. So to do nothing and just kick it down the road, I don't think is the right thing. And I think I feel better about it to not say, let's just sit and wait for the letter. And it's not going to be a good letter. Or if we're prepared to spend $32,000 plus higher and have to go through the process or spend more, that would be in closed session as the council we decide. So those are some of my comments. Open to anybody else from the council?
Yeah, I just want to, just for clarification, my statement is not kicking it down the road. I want to be really clear. We've been given three options. I'm saying we should create a fourth option, that this come back to us as an action item and that in that time, council be provided with more options as to what else can we do. The district is clearly the option that we've been given tonight. We've been given a number of other options through public comment, and I'd like to learn more about those. And I think that we should be completely informed before we change the future voting of this entire city. So, you know, we've been given three. There's no staff recommendation. What I would recommend would be that we, you know, look at the, receiving the report. We provide direction, and the direction that we would be providing would be to continue to analyze the various options, bring it back as an action item, potentially have a closed session in between. We not approve the $45,000 at this time or the authorization of the city manager to enter into a contract with the National Demographics Corp. from, until we're sure which direction we want to take. And hopefully, we don't get a letter, but clearly, they gave two weeks during Christmas break. And so in two weeks, we should have more information and hopefully be able to make a more informed decision.
Yeah. And again, that's, that's an option as well. And it is not, just like the garbage rates when they go out for 218. It's not to say the rates have been increased. It's not to, correct me. But it's not to say if or when there goes to a contractor to do this work, that when the data comes back to council, then that's when the council has to make a decision. Is that a correct statement? Or am I?
That is. If the council were to choose option one, you would set about the robust process and the demographic study. And then at the end of that process, once the maps are created, the council would have a decision point at what you want it to do at that stage. Should the council like to go into the direction that Councilmember Mason directed? I would want to clarify what options would staff look at in the interim just because I don't know that we have the expertise in this area to do that without a consultant. And so we may need to bring on a consultant to help us evaluate whether another voting method would comply with the law. And then timing such, because I know a number of the things that have been mentioned require a vote of the people. And so how would that fit with changing to districts? Right now, there is directly elected mayor and at-large. If we were to change and go to districts, you keep the directly elected mayor and you have four districts. There have been other suggestions that have been proffered. And so I would just like, sort of, if we go in that route, clear direction on what options we would be looking at and what the timeline. And some of those relate specifically to the law. Others do not. And there are more wholesale changes that require time analysis and direction.
If I could, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I think it would be helpful to ask our consultant if he knows anything about the other voting methods that have been proffered today. Those are interesting things. I happen to know about some of them myself through my own research. But I think the key question for the city council to know is whether those methods have actually been adopted by cities and have protected them from the sorts of litigation that we're talking about. If the answer is yes, then I think there's a basis for the city council to make that decision. If, on the other hand, the answer is no, or it's resulted in having to go to court and argue about which is the right method, and ultimately, they went to districts, then I think the council should know about that as well in making their decision.
Sure. We're working with Palm Desert, which fought a challenge. And in their court settlement, they agreed to go to a two-district system. There's five council members. One district will represent the Latino area and elect one member. And the second district will elect four. So it's a blended system. It's one of these systems that's only available through a charter or through a court settlement. And they're actually using ranked choice voting within each of the two districts. So there are innovative ways, but again, that's through a court settlement or through a charter. The other big challenge you run into, just from a practical side, is what the county can handle. So in that, in Palm Desert's case, the county has to do add-ons or elections. So in that, in Palm Desert's case, the county has to do add-ons to their election system. The city's paying $385,000 for the add-on, and they happen to have a, the county happens to have a vendor that's certified for the other election systems. That's a big difference. Mission Viejo is trying to go to cumulative voting. They actually got the plaintiff and a judge to agree to cumulative voting. They're a general law city, but they're trying to do it through a judge-ordered settlement. The Secretary of State has told them they can't do that, and the county has not weighed in yet with what they're going to do, but I presume the county registrar is going to follow the Secretary of State's direction. So that city's kind of up in the air with how they're gonna resolve that mess. So there are other options out there. We actually worked with Vista back when they had a federal Voting Rights Act challenge, and they actually just did outreach and engagement and generated candidates and turnout. It settled the federal, federal issue with the help of some good data. But then when the California law came along, they got popped and, and had to switch, in part because where they had had money to fight it a little bit earlier, now they were in a deficit and had nothing, so they just had to roll over. So there are options you can certainly look at, cumulative voting. Palm Desert is the first city ranked choice voting without pure districts. It's one of the interesting things that comes up a lot. It came up a lot in Menlo Park, when Schles and I were there. But San Francisco, Berkeley, San Leandro, Oakland, they all have ranked choice voting in districts. So that hasn't really been tried on its own as a remedy, but it's something out there. But again, the first step, there are two challenges here. One is the policy hurdle of coming up with a system that would help, I guess there's three challenges. Two is can the county implement it? Three is nothing but districts protects you from a lawsuit. So Mission Viejo's big challenge is they've settled with one plaintiff. Any other resident in the city can still bring up a new lawsuit. There's no, they have no protection other than people being happy with the system. The other thing is, with a lot of these alternative systems, proportional representation, things like that, you're talking about the whole council being up every two years. There's, you can get a little bit of proportionality with two seats up each year, but you really have to get to four, all four seats up each, every two years in order to do any of those alternative systems. But we have, worked with a lot of them. We are familiar with a lot of them. We've worked with the registrars. We, I always joke, NDC is probably the only firm in the state that sends holiday baskets to over 40 registrars every year, because we work so closely with them. And we're happy to, you know, share what we know about the process and the challenges you face, but it is both a policy question, and there's some very large practical sides to it. The biggest thing for the counties is they don't want to have, you're a vote center county, right? You went to the new vote center elections, I believe, here? Yeah. Yeah, so the county has, it's not just you need new machines for your city. The county has to put the new machines in every voting center in the, in the whole county to handle whatever you try to do. So that's where a big hurdle. It does. But, yeah. Again, and we're happy to come back with more information, because they have to change the counting computers. But, so there's lots of issues. We are happy to discuss them and go into great detail. As, as you know, we, there are many books on this, so we're happy to talk it however you want.
Thank you. I'm getting, well, from a majority of the council, wanting to give specific direction to staff on what they're trying to look at. They may need to bring in some expertise, and correct me, staff, if I'm wrong, in two weeks? Is, is that what I'm hearing from my colleagues, or? Michael, yes? Lynda, yes?
So if we're talking about the district election model and looking at a proportional voting model with district elections within two weeks, that sounds like something that we can do. If it is anything more than that, that's likely not possible. It requires more study.
Warren, Marty, what are your thoughts on the two-week, to what manager said?
I, it, it doesn't reduce the risk of it being, of us being sued regardless, if we, if we tried to buy a different way of doing the election. And I think the big difference here compared to what Verizon was, we denied it on, well, I don't want to go into that. We can talk about that later. But we're here now. I, I, I'm, I can go one or two of our options up there. I don't think we should have to wait.
If I can.
And I'm in agreement. I was definitely more towards two until we had this discussion, and I feel like two isn't really a proactive resolution. Two is really potential. I mean, it doesn't avoid the $32,000, because we could say, okay, great, we're not gonna do anything for, until 2022, and we still get a letter. So I'm definitely for proactive change, and I'd rather see this come back in two weeks.
So come back in two weeks with additional information for potential actual, action on a resolution? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
And that's what you two are saying? Is that correct? Okay, so the Medina's are out.
If I might make a suggestion?
Of course.
Verify a little bit. You might come back in two weeks on the question of a resolution of intent, and perhaps in two weeks invite public comment on what systems you want you might look at, and then go, that would give you some idea, then you could give direction to staff of what alternative systems you wanted to look at, if you want to go down that route.
Right, Doug. I think you're going in a direction that my mind was, which is, we can come back in two weeks, and council does not necessarily have to decide on what that system is. It's essentially launching the public process, which is almost, if you think about it, a version of, of number one, just saying, "We are not deciding if we're gonna have district-only or district proportional, but we are launching into the, into the, the process." Because you don't necessarily have to make that decision at this point. You do your robust community process over the next 90 days, and, and that's sort of the time when you vet a district-plus-proportional model and other, and other various forms of it. And so I just want to make that clear to council. But staff is happy to do whatever you like, but I think we could come back in two weeks and look at other options. Our council could give us direction to launch into the process and have that process consider other options.
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm wondering if, if you'll allow me to ask the consultant another question. I sort of feel like this is in, in court, we're just practicing. Is there, is there an action that the city council could take tonight by resolution that would at least provide some measure of protection against the possibility of receiving a letter and having to pay $32,000 between now and two weeks from now?
Yeah, this is, if you adopt the intent resolution now, you get the protection from, you remove the financial incentive to send you a letter. They don't get $32,000. It's, it's not binding, but it looks bad if you rescind it later on. So you could do that now, you know. As we mentioned, there have been a number of jurisdictions that kind of held off. We've spoken to council members from that and risked it and been fine. There have been other jurisdictions that have adopted the resolution, kind of to, to block the $32,000 folks and really force, really just serious attorneys to come after you who are ready to sue. See, you could do the resolution of intent now, would give you a little more safety. You could do the resolution of intent in two weeks and kind of ask your, obviously, you have residents who know about these alternative voting systems. They can come up with a list of what they want you to look at, at while you move forward with districts as one possible road.
So in other words, I think what I'm hearing, Mr. Mayor, is that the city council could make a motion, and we could do this by motion, and that we would prepare a resolution that would reflect the information in that motion that would declare the city council's intent to go to by-district elections, but bring the, the item back in two weeks for additional information about other voting methods that might be possible in those by-district elections. And then there may be another action required separately, and we could reflect in that resolution if the city council determines to retain the consultants to assist in that process now, or could defer that until a later date. So I think we have a couple of, couple of decisions to make, but I just want to make sure that if there is an action the city council could take now that would protect against that letter during that, that two-week period, that might be something worth considering.
Another question might be by colleagues. It says with the intent. So does that mean in two weeks, everybody can change and say, "Take it off the table," and then we just, we, we go with the wait option? Is that?
You, you could, and I think you've heard the consultant.
I understand, but, because when you're saying the intent?
Yes.
It would give that, people voting for that, that impression that that is a final decision.
You could change your mind at the next meeting, but that would unfortunately expose you to some liability.
Colleagues? Last, last I've heard from my colleagues, we had three that wanted to postpone for two weeks and come back with additional information from staff. That's what I've heard thus far. And there was two that would said, pass a resolution, doesn't mean we have to go with the districting, but we still need to give staff direction irregardless, obviously. So I'm back to the colleagues. Again, this is, we are just providing direction regarding the intent at this time, and so if there's not going to be a resolution, then we can provide the, the direction.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Marty?
I need to hear how you worded that again, because I would like to, to make that, to make that resolution, or make that motion to adopt the resolution with the intent and come back in two weeks to address the different voting methods that cover it?
There are three potential resolutions that we, that we can vote on, because those are the ones that are, that have been agendized. The two of them, I believe, are conflicting, and the third one is just for the expenditure of the funds.
Yeah, so, so I think you'd have to decide separately if you want to retain the consultant. So that's, that's one decision that doesn't necessarily relate to the other decisions, although, although it may. I think the resolution of intention, either number one or number two, could be easily modified to reflect an action tonight, to say that the council does intend to go to by-district elections, but wishes to bring this back two weeks from now to further discuss and determine whether there are other or additional voting methods that could be used in those by-district elections. I think we've heard the consultant indicate that would be protective, and it's your choice as to whether you would like to do that for 2020, which is the lowest risk, or for 2022, which is a somewhat higher risk. So I think that's the decision there, and then the other decision point is, do you want to hire the consultant?
What's the risk? Just to intend to take action, to adhere to the voters, the voters, what is the California Voters Rights Act, with the specific decision to be decided at a later time? So make it a little bit broader, a lot broader, actually.
Yeah, the problem is the law is part of this whole $30,000 thing. They set up a very specific checklist, so it, it has to be a declaration of intent to go to district elections to give you the, the protection from a lawsuit. You can also be looking at alternatives on a parallel path.
Right. We're also, I mean.
You just have to have adopted that intent, declaring your intent to go to district elections.
Right, and we're also, I mean, but by, in this decision, in these different decisions, we're being advised that we're gonna save $30,000, but we're also within seconds making a decision whether to save 30 to spend $45,000 on the consulting firm. And so I just think it's a lot, and I'd really like to get more information, and I am, you know, I don't think that the intent is not here on this council. I think that there would be a strong argument that there's not an intent to do something. We have a public record of tonight's meeting. I just think that we've really only been told tonight about district elections, and maybe that's the route we go. I just don't know enough about the other options out of what you've presented.
All right, I understand, and certainly respect that council can do whatever you want. The only caution is, is that both, in Camarillo's case, they actually had written a letter to the plaintiff saying, "We're going to do it. We're going to adopt this. We just can't do it over the holidays. We need three extra weeks," and that didn't protect them. And with Contra-Cast, Unified, it actually declared whoops and agendized the intent resolution, and that didn't protect them. So that's, that's the only reason why I say the, the resolution, if, if you want the dollar protection, it's gotta be very specific. But obviously, it's your choice to do whatever you'd like.
Michael?
Yeah, this decision has some potentially huge impacts to the city going forward, and thanks to COVID-19, we don't have a very big audience here tonight. I don't know if, if it's.
Yeah, if you're 30.
Yeah, and it was, this was agendized as a study session, so it's at the very end of a, of a long meeting, and I do believe that another two weeks of, of waiting is not gonna hurt us that much and does give the public more time to process what's happening, give them an opportunity to reach out either by email or call, letters, whatever, to provide some other feedback before we, we move into this. I still think there are some very negative, potential for some very negative impacts coming out of this, and I really want to understand what we can do to mitigate those. And so before we, before we commit to move forward, I just want to know that we've done all the homework, that we've gotten all the feedback, and that we're really prepared to go forward. So being that this was the study session, I do believe we need that, that extra two weeks to, to process that and, and come back with, with the decision.
Okay. So at this point, we're, I'm still, unless it's changed, there's three to have it continued for two weeks, come back, but we need to give staff extreme kind of guidance as far as what are we bringing? I mean, we've had Charter City brought up, we've had about different voting elements brought up, we've had, et cetera. So that's gonna be the case where we have it put on the agenda in two weeks by a majority of the council then, and there's another vote, we're giving direction. So what else do you need to know from us of what you need to look into to bring back to us so people feel more comfortable?
So I think a couple of things. I think we do need a, an actual motion made, and I think that would be helpful for us. I think another option that we just thought of here at the table is that if the city council adopted a resolution to do it in 2020, so the first option, bring it back two weeks from now, in theory, you could change your minds and say, "No, we've decided to do it in 2022." Question is whether that, what's the risk of that triggering a letter? I don't know if the consultant has any thought about that, but that's another option. But I think we need a specific motion that indicates, is it, is it just being continued, or are we adopting a resolution of intention? I think that's the first decision.
I understand that, but, but if, if it's introduced and it is denied, right? So go the intent, and it's a 3-2, and it's against. Doesn't that even put it up even worse?
Yes.
Yeah, because now you, so I don't, I don't like that path that we're talking about, because here it's saying, "Give direction." That's why I'm asking, does it have to be, it says, "Consider adopting resolution," but it says, "Provide direction regarding the intent." So why do we have to take a vote? And I'm not the lawyer, and I'm not the consultant. I'm just saying, that to me even puts us up to say, "You will not, you are not considering it."
I would say that you should take a vote to adopt either the first or the second option if it appears that either of those motions would pass.
I, I'm telling you, from what I'm seeing up here, is there's three to ask for it to come back in two weeks. So I don't, I'm asking you again, why would we be then putting it to a vote if that's going to be the end result?
Then you could make, instead, make a motion to continue it, and that's what we would do.
Okay. There we go. So it's a motion. Javon, did you want to add anything?
No, of course.
Okay, so, and we can't do by consensus, you want a motion to have a continuance of a study session?
Yeah, I think it would be great to have a motion.
For a continuance?
Sure, unless you can, unless you can determine that there's a consensus to continue it, then we'll take that back and bring it back. I didn't know that there was a consensus to continue it.
The way I'm knowing it, it's three is asking to postpone, that's what I've been saying, asking for additional information. I'm asking staff what they need to come back here in two weeks to bring this back.
If I can, why don't we just do a motion to continue the study session? It's a study session with, with an action item attached to it, and so you can virtually have this item repeated in two weeks with additional information, and if council would like to take a decision at that point, you can.
All right.
Through, through the chair, then, I will, I will make a motion that we delay the decision and continue this discussion due to the late hour and the poor attendance at the meeting.
I, I was going to support the decision to move forward with this in two weeks, because I, I, we're going to be back at the same place.
So a second?
I mean, I, I don't, so I don't second his motion.
Oh.
I, I second Michael's motion. It's on the table.
So we have a, a motion and a second on the question, Marty?
If, if I'm not hearing it, and I apologize, it is late, but we, we've been later.
Yep.
Okay.
So it sounds like my colleague, Councilmember Davis, is having a change of mind?
Yeah, I mean, I, I just, I honestly do not see what we're going to do in two weeks that's any different than tonight. I mean, what we're, I think what we're hearing is very clear, that there are not a lot of options out there, I think we go back, back to the public to see what they want, and let's go through that public process.
Good.
And to sit out, I mean, we're, we're in a time crunch, too, we don't have a lot of time between now and, and the election, to hold off until 2022 puts us in a liability. So my vote is to move forward with this motion tonight, resolution.
We have. Michael?
A motion on the table that we need to vote on, but I, I would say.
Put on the question.
I, I would say that, so we have, we have two potential paths that have been outlined here, and I, I think a better understanding of what can be done by extending it, even with a risk, is, is worth looking into before we make a decision on which of the two paths to take, but so even if, if everyone's decided that we have to do districts, and they're either going to be in 20 or 22, I'd like some time to, and I'd like more information on what, what can be done to reduce any negative impacts, and if that means we have to delay to 22, even with additional risk, I would prefer to go that route, rather than make a decision tonight on delaying it without an understanding if there is a benefit to doing it versus doing it in 20, so.
Yeah.
Again, I, I call for a vote.
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may?
Yes.
I'm sorry to keep interrupting.
No.
I apologize.
It's okay, I want to make sure we're all understanding.
I do know it's late, we're, we're all trying to do the, the best thing, I think. So another alternative that we've just come up with is to adopt a resolution of intention that states you're going to district elections in either 2020 or 2022, and you want the item brought back in two weeks for further discussion about that. Does the consultant have any thoughts about that?
Boy, the later it gets, you come up with these, these great ideas.
Keep it going. None of my fun.
We're doing our best.
Okay, so the first motion on the table is to have a continuance of the study, study discussion, and give staff clear direction to come back with additional information. Did I say that? All right? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
No? So motion loses two, three, so do I have a, another motion on the table?
Oh, no, I'm gonna, I motioned to bring this back in two weeks, I, I motioned to the resolution to look, to study this for 2020 or 2022.
So I would think that the, it's to introduce a resolution for the intent for district elections in 20 or 2022, bringing it back within two weeks, correct?
Yes, just what you said.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Michael?
I, I don't understand what we're voting on. You're saying, you're saying we could do either, but bring it back in two weeks, but we're approving a resolution to do one of those two actions, so what action would come back in two weeks?
So you turn.
The, the decision as to whether to go to district elections in 2020 or 2022, and we could certainly look at other voting options and so on, as I think has been requested by a couple of the council members as well, as part of that staff report.
But there would be no action required in two weeks?
There would be, there would be an action required to determine whether, which of those two options you, you wanted to take, 2020 or 2022. The, the difference is that you're adopting a resolution of intention tonight, which would at least provide the city with an argument that it's entitled to protection between now and two weeks. That was the intent behind that, that notion.
Is that still confusing? I mean.
And that protects us.
Lynda?
Yeah, but the, the intent is to go to district elections for 2020 or 2022.
That's what that motion would do, that's right.
City manager?
Well, district elections, but there could be a hybrid model, model with district elections with proportionality or some other form that we, we come up with through the robust community engagement process, and, and with additional input over the, over the 90 days.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Okay, okay, so does everybody know the motion?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
No.
3-2.
Thank you for your direction.
On your last idea.
We'll be back in two weeks.
Okay.